Call the meeting in order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Davies.
Here.
Mayor Proton Pogencourt.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Power.
Here.
Councilmember Chung.
Here.
All are present.
If I could have everybody rise, please, and all the pledge allegiance, please. Poggy, would you offer the salute?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Considered agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-contributial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions, if comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for the member of the public to address the city council concerning the item these four acts has taken. Stack regulations are shown in tabs. Do we have anybody in the audience would like to have anything removed from the consent agenda? See none, council?
No.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogencourt?
Yes.
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you. Communication, uh, community engagement director reports, Mr. Budge?
Public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Uh, do we have any public comments from audience members tonight? Is he waiting?
It looks like he's filling out his speaker card.
Oh, yeah, it's a card, right.
He's filling out his speaker card, it looks like.
How you doing, sir? Would you like to come up to the podium, please? Do you have a public comment? Yeah, come forward, please.
Sorry, I was just filling out the card.
No problem. Could you state your name and area residence, please?
Sure. Um, my name is Shalang Gimpo. My legal name is Peter. I live in Tehachapi on Oakwood Street, precisely 410 Oakwood. And I just would like to, uh, point out something. There is a leak right in front of my house, 410. It's also in front of my neighbor's house at 412. And I believe that my neighbor to the west, which is, I think, 408. And, uh, it's a big leak, it's been there for a couple of weeks already, on the street, coming from under the street.
Is it in the middle of the street?
Middle of the street, but it's flowing in the direction of my house, my centered, centered right there. Uh, I think the city is aware of it already. They posted a notice that, uh, that they know about it. And they're going to try to identify the, where the utility that's responsible, I guess. Uh, I don't know how long that's going to take. But, obviously, yeah, there is a risk of a sinkhole developing. So it's, uh, I would say, a pretty urgent problem. So, I just wanted to let you know, uh, hope that you'll address it as soon as possible. Otherwise, I just want to say that I've lived here for 12 years. I love this town. And I thank you all for your administration, which is, I think, it's a very well-run city. And I'm happy and proud to live here, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll let our public works department know about it and I'll have somebody will get a look, get in. And you'll see getting worked on, I'm sure.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Colley, Peter?
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, we're very aware of the, of the leak, as the gentleman pointed out. Um, I think our public works department, if I recall, repaired nine leaks last week alone. Seems like during the winter, sorry, during the summer months, uh, we experienced more leaks. There's a theory, you know, the ground is hard and different things are not moving and things are breaking at that point. I do believe that the leak that you're speaking of is slated for repair tomorrow, ironically. Uh, because we repair the bigger leaks first, sometimes these nuisance leaks, they tend to go on and on for a while. We'd like to, you know, fix everything the day out, that's not, that's not, uh, possible, of course. But I do believe your, your leak, the, the, uh, leak in your street on Oakwood is slated for repair tomorrow.
Yeah, there's a, there's another leak, uh, further, uh, for, for the, uh, south. Uh, that's towards the top of Oakwood, I don't know the, the actual address. And there is also a billboard, what do you call those things? With a, with a notice there.
Water system is very old.
I don't know if it's the same leak or separate leak, I just.
Probably separate, but, you know, our guys are, are very good at what they do. And, uh, we have a team of, of experts that just repair leaks every day. It's an old city with old infrastructure, as you recall, we've replaced lots of water lines. F Street, Denison Road, uh, two years ago, and so we're very aware of it. And we'd like our water system to not leak, but the ground moves around here, that's for sure. And, uh, we're very aware and thank you for the comment.
Good, thank you. Uh, if I may, I just thought of something else that I wanted to bring up. It's just an idea. I've been to the library here a few times, I know that's a state responsibility. But the library of Tehachapi is, uh, really nothing to be proud of. I'm sorry to say it. And I would just like to suggest that with the public and civic spirit, this town could raise money and, uh, put together our own library, city library, with really some, basically, good books, there's so many great books that people should have access to. And, you know, true, we have a li- interlibrary loan. But the beauty and the pleasure of browsing and looking at all these wonderful books that have been left to us, the legacy of, of hu- humanity, you know. We should have it at, at, uh, within, within our hands' breadth, our hands' length. Okay, so it's just an idea, I don't know if it's feasible, but, uh, it's something to think about because I don't think that the state or the county is going to handle it. They don't, they don't care. All right?
All right.
Thank you again for listening.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments from the audience? I see none. Okay, uh, Key, please, community engagement director reports.
Good evening, Mayor Davies, council. Tonight, big night on the agenda, so I want to say, first of all, thank you for the two proclamation recognitions that you granted and 10 recognitions to different groups. Uh, we took the opportunity, because of the volume, uh, to take photos with the mayor prior to the meeting outside. Uh, this room was filled and overflowing with different community groups and they just expressed their appreciation for being recognized. And what I want to do is publicly recognize each of these, uh, 12 different groups, uh, because we had a fantastic summer. And it's, this doesn't happen without, uh, these groups participating. Uh, first, uh, Community Action Partnership of Kern Asked, also known as CAP-K, requested September be proclaimed as Hunger Action Month, we did that a year ago. And thank you for doing that. They participate, uh, with our Seniors Meals on Wheels Salvation Army Food Program and some others here in Tehachapi. We also had another proclamation, and this is National Service Dog Month. And we recognized Canine Companions, a local group that, uh, does the beginning stage of teaching these healing dogs for people in need with disabilities, that these service dogs can go, uh, out into and across America. And here we have, in Tehachapi, we have a large number of canine companion handlers. And two of them were here today to accept that proclamation and appreciated, uh, they said they appreciated, uh, the recognition. We have 10 groups that we recognized for their hard work over the summer. One, Cheers to Charity. Uh, this was their, uh, 10th annual, and they raised several hundred thousand dollars over the last 10 years. They go to local charities, nonprofits. And their event, again, this year was very successful, they do it at Aviator Park. And if you've ever had an opportunity to attend, you know how positive this event is. And it just trickles down throughout the community. So we wanted to recognize them, and they were very appreciative of that recognition. Next, uh, Tehal- uh, Tehachapi Valley Arts Association, they do multiple things. Uh, one was the, uh, the sidewalk art contest that they did. Just a fantastic job. Our public works goes out, pressure cleans sidewalks, and the next day, uh, kids, families, artists come out and share their creations on the sidewalk. And, uh, they stay there until the weather says it's time for the, to go away. And it's a fundraiser to put, uh, art supplies in our local schools. And City Tehachapi was also proud to help sponsor that event as one of the sponsors. And also with TBAA, uh, we also wanted to recognize their makers markets that they coordinate and run various times of the year, but they did one during Mountain Festival at Redwood Park, very successful. Uh, and highlight local artisans with their handmade, uh, items. Uh, Gail Caldwell represented TBAA, she was very excited and appreciative of that recognition. TBRPD, I believe Cory Torres and Kent are still here. We wanted to recognize them for, uh, what they did in July. We proclaimed Recreation Month in July, and there were several successful events. Uh, today, Mayor Davies acknowledged their work with kicking off the Mountain Festival with the Mountain Gallup, the 5K, a longstanding tradition and the success. And they also set a record, I believe this year, with more than 100 participants. And for the 4th of July, their 5K, they had more than 300 participants. So what they're doing to help promote recreation in our community is appreciated. TMRA, with what they've done on 4th of July with, uh, Ben's Bad Bulls, uh, competition, plus the rodeo that's a part of Mountain Festival to kick that weekend off. They have the Friday and Saturday of our three-day Mountain Festival. And we had their board here and they were very much appreciative to be recognized for all their hard work. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, the chamber has taken over a couple of events. They will be taking over the Apple Festival upcoming, but we recognized this, uh, Mountain Festival, all the hard work that, uh, the Board of Directors, Claire Scotty, her team, uh, put in, uh, for the event, very successful. Cory, offhand, how many, we have over, over 10,000 people for the weekend?
Yeah.
That, that came here and enjoyed, uh, that portion of, uh, the weekend. So much to do and all the hard work that the chamber put in is appreciated. The Tehachapi Amateur Radio Association, they stepped up and have been volunteering and helping at chamber events. And they do that as volunteers and, uh, they actually helped find two lost children and got them back to their parents within minutes. As the TB, uh, TPD was being notified, they were able to utilize their handheld radios back and forth and found the parents before the officers were actually able to arrive on scene. So it was nice with their volunteer that they assisted in public safety that way. Um, and they were, they were appreciated and said thank you for the recognition. We also recognized Derek and Jesse Davis, owners of West Lane Brewing. They came up with the idea to recreate the Green Street Get Down. And that was something that we put together last year. And the Hurricane Hillary or Tropical Storm Hillary said otherwise, and it was canceled. So this was our first attempt at putting it together and making it go live. And it was thanks to their creative vision of recreating, uh, this long history of having a, a dance as a part of the, the, uh, Mountain Festival weekend, very successful. We had over 1,300 people on Green Street, uh, just a, a great turnout. And thanks to that, their idea behind it and vision, we were able to, to pull it off. Uh, we recognized, uh, hashtag Love Tehachapi. They volunteered during the Green Street Get Down, they did a lot of different things for us. But every time we asked them to step up, um, or participate, the answer is always yes, and how can we do more? So, uh, they, and they continue to say, we don't want recognition. But I think the recognition is well-deserved and, uh, we owe it to them just to say thank you. And maybe it'll help, you know, recruit new, new volunteers to their group because they do such a great job. And then finally, um, council member Jeanette Power, her team with the Tehachapi Mural Project. What it's done has revitalized art appreciation in our downtown. So, we got a chance to, to say thank you to council member Power, her team, um, and just with what you've done. I know we had the ribbon cutting, but we just thought we wanted to do something in front of council. And then the fact that you were able to get Mark Pastana to, to, uh, come out early and create this new project for us that we've talked about for a few years, very much appreciative of, uh, you know, what you've done, so. And that's it, so that's two proclamations, 10 recognitions, and everyone was very much appreciative. And because of the time constraints that some of them had, we did all the photos ahead of time. Um, and did then, Mayor Davies read those proclamations to them, but we wanted to make sure all council were aware. Thank you.
Maya?
Good evening, Mayor and council. So today, um, I'm bringing to you the announcement of our third annual Tehachapi Hometown Christmas. That is going to be held on Saturday, December 7th, the first Saturday in December that coincides with the Christmas parade and lots of other fun festivities taking place that day. It was a great success last year. It grew exponentially from its inaugural event two years ago. And I hope that this year will be bigger and better than ever. So we're very excited that we will be holding two planning meetings tomorrow, one at noon and one at 6:00 PM. Um, and that is open to the public. We hope to get everybody that participated last year or maybe missed out to come and share their ideas as we start to plan for this year's event. So we're really looking forward to it. We have logo here, um, on the screen, it's beautiful. And, uh, we are just excited and invite anybody that is interested to attend those meetings tomorrow and help us make this a great event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maya, uh, where is the meeting going to be held here?
It'll be held here, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Noon and 6:00 PM, so two opportunities.
Okay.
And I'm sure we'll have additional meetings as move, but this is the kickoff meetings.
Thank you very much, Maya. Uh, airport, uh, airport manager reports?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and council members. As the council is aware, the city has various lease agreements with wireless carriers, uh, for cell towers at the airport rock pile. We have an attached, uh, lease agreement with New Singular Wireless, which is AT&amp;T, which most of you know, we've kind of been working with them for several years on this. It will allow for the construction of a 38-foot cell tower.
And it's their delay, not ours. This is not on city, this is AT&amp;T.
Yes.
To be clear.
It will allow for the construction of a 38-foot cell tower with an initial term of five years and four additional five-year options. The design and conditions of approval for the new cell tower were approved by the Planning Commission on August 12th. So this adds, of course, revenue to the airport. So, uh, we will get an initial fee of $5,000 for the administration of the lease, which we've done quite a bit of. Um, and monthly revenue of $3,000, which would annually be $36,000. There's also an increase built into the lease of 3% annually. Um, and the revenue, revenue from this, uh, these type of leases, like I said, may be significant. It's a significant source of the operating funds for the airport, so it's very important. And it's, uh, uh, the impact to the airport is negligible. Uh, so the recommendation is that you approve the agreement between the City of Tehachapi and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC and authorize the mayor to sign, subject to city manager and city attorney approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ashley. Do we have any comments from the public? See none, council?
I'd like to make a comment. I'm, it's just such a happy news. Although, um, I was waiting and I waited and waited and waited and I moved to different carrier.
Well, now you'll have options.
But it's, it's, but at least I can call, somebody has an AT&amp;T at the city hall. And when I text it, they don't get it. So, I am so happy that finally it's happening.
Yes.
The last time they were going to put the cell tower over by the school, or what are the chances of them, of this going south? Because someone complains they're close to the school or whatever?
Well, it's been approved by Planning Commission, nobody, uh, let Jake speak to that here.
Yeah, that condition, the school, uh, board ultimately voted not to execute this lease. So the, the equivalent of this lease. So in this case, if you, uh, dock this lease tonight, you're taking the step the school district did not take. Um, and so other than that, there are no further hurdles other than those imposed by AT&amp;T upon itself. Uh, so if it doesn't come through this time, uh, it, it is solely their choice not to execute, so.
Thank you.
So it's not, uh, a positive or confirm that AT&amp;T would be building, just allowing them to build?
No, they, well, they're, you know, their, uh, their line staff communication with my staff is, is they're working on the package for a building permit now.
Okay.
Um, and that this is just a side item that needs to get done to, to bring the whole project together. So as far as we know, they're actively moving forward on their authorization.
But this could be a year away.
Yeah.
They have to design and build the town.
Sorry, more ways, but at least.
I'm holding out, I'm holding out one bar. It's ironic how the first cell tower was a singular tower on Highline and had great coverage.
Mm-hmm.
And then when AT&amp;T got a hold of it, under their umbrella, they moved it, re-angled it. And, and that's why you only have one bar right now.
Interesting.
Four zero.
Depending upon your spot on the sidewalk, yeah, I understand.
It's just a low-level valley of no signal.
They're, they're well aware, I mean, they've been very plain with us that they know their coverage in, in the core of the town is very poor, so, um, I, I don't want to oversell it because I just have seen it come and go too many times, so we're hopeful though.
Yeah, okay.
Very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Item 11, uh, vote with service director. Item 11.
Very good. Honorable Mayor, council members, I have three items for you tonight. The first is an amended memorandum of understanding between the City of Tehachapi and the County of Kern for a Rule 20A utility pole undergrounding project. So, uh, if you guys will recall, back in December of 2021, uh, we, uh, you all approved, um, a proposal to create what's known as an underground utility district on Valley Boulevard between Curry and Tucker, roughly. Um, and the purpose of creating that district is the first major step in utilizing Rule 20A funds, which, you know, if you didn't know, those are on your utility bills, uh, we all pay into that funding system. And those funds are to be used at the discretion of a local agency for undergrounding power poles. It's a very onerous process. Um, I wish I could report that it has been smooth sailing, it has not. It has been very difficult working with Edison, um, to advance the project. So back in December, we created this because we knew that we had lined up the five to six million dollars necessary to underground the majority of those poles in that, in that range here depicted on the drawing. Um, and we've been diligently working to that end for a while. We've run into numerous snags, um, with the utility company, the latest of which, well, not the latest of which, the second most recent, um, was that due to inflation, uh, Southern California Edison came back and reported to us that the funds we had set aside for this were no longer sufficient to do the project. And they tabled the project, uh, against our wishes. So, uh, as you will recall, we entered into an MOU with the County of Kern, who has a much larger pool of these funds than we do and, and they, with no plans for utilizing those funds. And since a portion of this, um, road right-of-way extends through a county pocket here in our city, the, the county was receptive to our request to have some of their allocation of Rule 20A dollars combined with our allocation in order to execute the project. So when the funding gap came to be, um, again, the project was initially estimated 5.3 million, we re-approached the County of Kern to ask if they would be willing to allocate yet more dollars because we were fully allocated, um, with what we had to the project. And to our great relief, the, the county has agreed to do this. Um, and so I cannot speak enough about, uh, how well that partnership with the County of Kern has yielded fruit for us. Um, so they are proposing to add $2 million, uh, to their dedication to the project. That brings them, they're delivering the lion's share, about 6 million of the 7.3 million the county is delivering to this project. Um, and so they, um, we produced an amended memo, uh, of understanding, MOU, um, with the city attorney's assistance. That was routed to the county and the county board supervisors have already voted to, to approve this. So tonight, we need you all to approve this amendment to the MOU, uh, so we can take that hurdle off the table. As a general, um, update, I still have a few others. Um, we're dealing with some easement issues now. The, the single largest concern we've had is, is on three separate occasions over the last four years, Edison has unilaterally decided to pause the project for their own reasons. Uh, I don't have a project manager or, uh, we don't have easements and we got to go do more research, so we'll call you back when we're ready, kind of response. It's been pretty difficult, we've been working, myself and the city manager extensively with Edison, trying to keep them corralled and moving forward. Um, and so this is an important step in keeping the project moving forward. So, um, uh, tonight, I recommend that you authorize the mayor to sign the amended memorandum of understanding between the City of Tehachapi and the County of Kern to accept the additional $2 million in credits and manage this joint Rule 28 project, subject to final review and approval, uh, by the city attorney and city manager. So, uh, that's my report on this item, happy to answer questions on the subject. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the audience on this item? Council, Phil?
Is there going to be any remediation at Griffin Street where there's that large culvert? On the south side, we have a walkway. On the north side, we have that no guardrail. That, when is someone going to go over the edge in a snowstorm situation? Will that be addressed in this undergrounding, or are they gonna, they're gonna go across?
Yeah, the answer is, is no, to direct, directly to your question. It's not conceived of as part of this project. My belief, as, I don't have the plans memorized. There is a design nearly complete at this point, actually, so we're, that is positive news.
Of what?
Is that they'll be in the street with the conduit bank and they'll go over that culvert with the bank of undergrounded conduits. So, um, no, I mean, on the plus side, any power poles through this area that might present an obstacle to a motorist leaving the roadway will go away.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but, uh, but in the spot that you speak of, there are no plans to make improvement as part of this project.
Do we have any pro, uh, plans to?
No, it's county is the, the tricky spot for us. We own the 60 feet of roadway in the middle, on both sides in that location, um, that's county jurisdiction. My one, uh, caveat to that is we do have a concept master plan for this one-mile section of roadway, meaning from an engineering perspective, years ago, we sort of produced the original thought for the various widths of the roadway along this mile stretch, taking into consideration all the homes and the built-up environment in that area. So we do have a long-term plan for what that roadway will look like. Uh, I am hopeful, I, please don't hold me, this is simply a concept to answer your question, that if we get these poles out of the way, that we may be in a position to jointly, us and the County of Kern, apply for an ATP grant in a future cycle.
Okay.
To improve that area. But, uh, but I've, I've made no meaningful movement on that.
We'll count our blessings on the county, on the Rule 20, make money and, uh...
Let's make this project go well, is my vote. And, and I hear the comment and we'll keep it under advisement, see if we can't find a way to make it happen. So we're pretty good at finding a way.
So any kind of improvement would be with the embedded conduit already in place?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be the idea.
How many utilities are going to be in there?
Um, Race is already underground through that area. And so Edison, Spectrum and AT&amp;T are all in that area. I'm pretty sure that, um, Spectrum is going to joint-drench with Edison and then AT&amp;T is going to go off on their own. The underground utility district simply makes a declaration to all the utilities that all the poles have to go away.
Gotcha.
They can either choose to group up and do a single bundu- bundle of conduits or to do them separately. And that's a lot of what's been worked on in the last three years, is.
Okay.
That's fun negotiation.
I appreciate all the work on this because it's going to be a huge improvement along that right-of-way.
I agree. I agree.
So, Edison, are they very serious this time?
They're serious in the sense that they understand their obligation, that the organization is changing. And I think maybe that's a Greg smile, and it says it all. We've been dealing with a huge, they've had a huge turnover post-COVID of personnel. And so, they are a different organization than they were four or five years ago. Not necess, some things maybe are better, others are not. We struggle on this front with getting them to sort of, they don't like these projects. They take up a lot of resources, and even though they have effectively infinite money, because they just declare how much of Rule 20A dollars they need, and it's not negotiable with them. I mean, this is an outrageously expensive project for what they're doing. At seven point three million. But, they, this is just not at the top of their list. And I think that's part of the problem. Big part of the problem. Maybe it's the whole problem.
So, now that we've approved it, it will move along?
It's moving along, but the frustration was, previous delays created by them now created this need for more money. So, my, my concern continues. Will this happen again? Will they delay this project for another two years, and then come back and say, oh, it's not enough money now? You know, I mean, it's a tough situation.
I hope, I hope Edison is very serious, and they're committed.
Yeah.
And, you know, be, be responsible on their part. And because the, you know, this underground utility is not only for the visual, you know, but it's so safe for the people around there. And the residents around there, they will have less, the electric shortage due to PSPS.
Correct, should be a safer system.
It's a wonderful project.
They'll debate you on that, as Greg well knows, there's, their, their ways are not our ways. But.
Well, my area, yeah, area level is underground, and we don't get that much electric shortage. I mean, we don't get that shortage that much, like other areas.
Much more reliable system, yes.
Any other questions?
You can make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogonkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Item twelve?
Second item I have for you all is a resolution to adopt a proposed project list for the California State Good Repair Program fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. You guys, hopefully this is not news information to you as part of SV1. That's the gas tax bill from many years ago now, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. A subcomponent of that bill is the State of Good Repair Program. That's funding for transit-related activities that is collected through gas tax, that is available back to us, and is allocated towards us. But we have to utilize it for qualified expenses associated with transit. So, we have about three hundred thousand in our SGR bank account right now, and we have to annually let the state know what we intend to spend it on. We are not ultimately bound by this list, in the sense that if we come up with a better project later, we can make a shift to that, as long as the funds are still spent within the boundaries of the program, which again are transit-related. So, staff identified a number of years ago, the intent to close this gap in the roadway of Tatchy Boulevard, effectively between the western edge of the Park and Ride, and our Transit Center, and J&amp;H Auto, where the road is not at full width, and the pedestrian path is not there. And that's a qualified expense, because it's within a quarter-mile of transit, and it's related to, the pedestrian path is related to access to the Transit Center. So, we had operated under the assumption that this was sufficient funds to do this project up until about six or eight months ago, when the engineering team really got started, and went out there and started kicking rocks, and found that we have some storm drain issues out there in that location that are more difficult to deal with than, than this budget may cover. So, the plan is to continue to gather the money. We have enough funds to execute the design, which the team has already begun doing. And by executing the design, we should be able to come back and have a better understanding of the exact cost, and figure out what our deficit is, and how to close that deficit. This year, this action is simply to take the city's next dose of SGR funds, which total ten thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and let the state know that we intend to add that to the funds we already have in SGR for this project. So, I recommend that you adopt a resolution, the city council, the city of Tatchy, adopting a proposed project list for the California State of Good Repair Program fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Counsel?
Good project.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always been, it's like a little eyesore right there, where you're, all the work everybody's done over the years, and you go right there, it's kinda?
Yeah, we've got just a cup, three gaps left in Tatchy Boulevard to close, and we're sort of tracking each one, trying to figure out a way to get it done. So, this is one of the pieces.
Thank you, Jay. Roll call, please.
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogonkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Item thirteen?
Yes, sir, the third item I have for you tonight is the East Tatchy Boulevard and State Highway fifty-eight interchange project to hire specialized consulting services. So, this is a new task for us, and maybe a new moment for the city of Tatchy. Doing large projects that are associated between the city and Caltrans are extensive, from a paperwork and processing standpoint. Councilmember Smith knows a great deal about this from his time on KernCog, that projects like this take a great deal of time. We have had our eye in the engineering department now for, for a number of years on the revised geometry for the on-and-off ramps at Highway fifty-eight and East Tatchy Boulevard, out by Loves and Pilot. Those two on-and-off ramps have limited capacity because of the way their geometry, geometrically laid out. And, and they also create traffic concerns on Tatchy Boulevard, because we have four signals in a row, if you guys are out there and can kind of visualize this location. So, that's been less than ideal for a long time. And the long-term growth out there in that section of town will necessitate upgrades to this interchange. At some point, the interchange, maybe not that far in the future, will become this bottleneck in terms of allowing additional development to occur out there because of the traffic-related issues. So, years ago, the engineering team studied some geometric changes with Caltrans District Nine, and the team has determined that now is a good opportunity for us to work with the county of Kern again in partnership, to begin to consider making these changes. So, a couple of things have to happen. First of all, what had to happen was the updated traffic impact fee program, which you all approved earlier this year. That program brought this project onto that list. It now allows that joint program between the county and the city to be tackled jointly, right? So, by, by doing that, we've now positioned ourselves to, to, to advance this particular project with those funds. The county of Kern's on board, they see the long-term regional value of upgrading those. And so, step one is for us to generate what's known as a PSR, PDS, which is a project study report, project development support. That is a Caltrans-required document, that is sort of the blueprint for actually doing the work. So, from there, you move, if we successfully do this, and then we align the funds, next step is environmental and right-of-way acquisition, and then after that, you move into construction. This will take a number of years to execute. So, we talked to the county of Kern about splitting the cost of this report, which they agreed to do. I'll have that MOU for you at a future council meeting date pretty soon. But we are ready to hire a company to help us write this extensive report. So, we solicited a scope of work from Parsons, who has recently completed project management or program management services for the city of Bakersfield and county of Kern for, for all the major freeway projects that were completed over the last ten to fifteen years in the Bakersfield area. So, their local team is quite experienced at generating these types of documents. And so, that's why we suggest we hire Parsons to complete this work. We estimate the total project budget to be about two hundred thousand. The Parsons component is about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy thousand of that work. The remaining funds would be for staff time. And we would propose to split that cost of that report with the county of Kern, one hundred thousand each, drawn from our traffic funds. So, this would not be general fund, this would be for traffic funds. So, I recommend, we have produced an agreement for that scope and fee with the assistance of the city attorney, and we recommend that you approve the agreement between the city of Tatchy and Parsons Transportation Group Incorporated. So, yeah, that, that's a rendering of one of the realignments. So, that would be the eastbound on-and-off ramps. The proposed realignment would be to bring the on-and-off ramps to a future intersection of Stuber and Valley Boulevard. Hopefully, that makes some sense, I can answer further questions. I don't know if there's a further drawing down.
Where's the?
Okay, that's not quite, if you go back, Corey, it's not quite the right alignment for the westbound on-and-off ramps. There were multiple options considered in the previous report. And we would not propose now to connect it to Monolith Street, which is how it's depicted in this drawing, but instead of Noria Street, which is one street further to the east, yeah.
But you're gonna get rid of it really tight.
Correct. So, if you guys don't mind, I'll?
Yeah.
I'll make a scene a little bit, too, let's see. There you go, help you out. All right. Yeah, so, this is the current eastbound off-ramp, and eastbound on-ramp, and the proposal is to bring it here to a future intersection where Stuber and Valley, and if you can push Valley through, think of the fact that Valley goes all the way to the prison. So, now you have this very straight shot, straight on to the on-ramps, all the way through the community on Valley, to the east. So, pretty important regional roadway connections. And then, for the westbound on-and-off ramps, we would actually propose to deliver it over here to, this is Noria's just off the screen. So, this is Monolith, that's Noria. This just doesn't work, because it's too close to these driveways that access the truck component of Loves. So, one of the other alternatives would be to do that kind of arrangement. So, and then this westbound on-and-off right-of-way. So, two signals would come off Tatchy Boulevard, and then traffic would be spread out a little bit.
So, first step is to prepare this Caltrans-required document that goes through extensive detail on what this project would cost and how you would do it. So, we gotta spend some money to figure out what to do.
All right, thank you, Jay.
Yeah.
Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Counsel?
I know that you said Bakersfield has used Parsons, have we ever used them in any capacity?
I, we have not, as the city of Tatchy, to my knowledge, ever utilized Parsons for service work. I've known a number of the engineers and team members. In fact, the lead project manager is Minerva Rodriguez, who had a previous career working for Caltrans, and has done projects in the city of Tatchy, or in the Tatchy community for Caltrans. So, I've known Minerva for over ten years. And so, I know some of the people associated with the project, but the city has not hired Parsons in the past.
And how old is the Loves and Pilot station? Because I'm assuming that that's had a huge impact.
Two thousand and ten, I think, is Loves.
Two thousand and ten?
And Pilot was maybe eighteen, nineteen, something in that, yeah, something. So, yeah, there was nothing happening out here before those two existed.
Right.
I recently had things shipped from North Carolina here to Tatchy, and it was three different shipments, and every one of those shippers knew that truck stop. The ones who've come out to the west, it was like, I know Tatchy, I know exactly, can we go to the bakery and meet you there? Like, okay. But they all, they all knew, all three of those shippers, a car and two households, all knew those truck stops.
Well, years ago, I heard a trucker told me that it's a lot cheaper to drive up the hill with a nearly empty tank than to drive up the hill with a full tank. And so, they, they designed their route to hit here and fill up. And I thought, eh, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I was, I was just surprised, that they, they knew exactly where we were. I didn't tell them Bakersfield, and this, no, they knew, they knew. So, it's, it's an important commerce.
Yeah.
Claudia?
Do you need me?
Yes, please.
Okay. Claudia Elliott. So, I just had a question, Jay. If, if you're gonna run Valley all the way to Stuber, and then run traffic off the freeway, down Valley, all the way to the prison, you'll be going past the high school and Sage Ranch.
Yes, ma'am.
So, will the public have an opportunity to be involved in this before, before it would happen? Or doing this with Caltrans, are you making that deal already? Thank you.
Yeah. So, in answer to that question, the mayor, the answer is, nothing's set in stone at this point. The study simply provides the boundaries for the steps necessary to execute a project of this nature. The project's been conceived of, this report was presented previously, this report fifteen, sixteen? I think is when I brought this report to council. So, it's been a little while since we've had this discussion about this project, but it was, it was considered at that time. It's also a component of the traffic impact program. The question you bring up, I think, is a valid one. Our circulation element in the general plan also speaks to the long-term regional nature of Valley Boulevard. And then, it also speaks to that, and the zoning codes speak to the expectations of what we have to do to build the roadways to make that make sense long-term. So, yeah, there'll be future opportunities, we'll be presenting this report and completing it. I think, after that, the big step, there will, of course, be formal public comment time associated with CEQA, because the next step after a report like this would be to fund the environmental process. So, CEQA would be a very formal step for receiving public comment. But I think more granular than that will be the moment when we figure out how we're gonna pay for things like CEQA and right-of-way, and we're working with the county of Kern on an MOU, and cost-sharing that effort, and, and you all getting to see what the project study report says is the long-term plan. To be clear, the PSR, PDS only evaluates the on-and-off ramp relocations. It does not evaluate the extension of Valley Boulevard from Dennison to Stuber. That is a separate activity that we would have to fund, and we have not yet identified funding for that. But, but it is part of the long-term circulation, and we've got our eye on it.
Do we have any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be, if, let's say, it's gonna be the off, on Valley, is there a conflict with the rail, the fast train that passes the?
Yeah, the high-speed rail cuts
Yeah.
right across the Haas property.
Right, there you go. It goes right across the Barrow pit, and right through there.
The high-speed rail is elevated. Should they build it, they will design and build around our infrastructure.
It's all separation agreement.
Oh, I see.
For the entire route.
Yeah, the only, that's exactly correct. The only question then becomes, if Valley exists before or after? So, the train was supposed to be on elevated soil, embankment, meaning, if they get the rail line in before we build Valley Boulevard, then we get to pay to build a hole under the high-speed rail. But if Valley Boulevard gets constructed first, then they have to figure out how to leave our road alone and build over it, you know?
I hope that one shake the road bad.
Yeah. No, I don't think it'll shake very much. Yeah, I don't, so we'll see.
Because if it's go over, it's gonna be like a bridge.
That's an interesting, I hadn't thought about the, you know, I don't. They still have no plans to fund this section of high-speed rail.
You can notice, we juggle a lot of plates. AT&amp;T, SCE, Caltrans, county, high-speed rail, you know, there's a lot of moving parts into what we do, what we present to you. But, again, this is the first step, and building out Valley, and funding this particular project is years out. But we must plan, and this is how we do it, right? We have to start somewhere.
We do have a tacit blessing from Caltrans about funding the construction phase.
It's one of those projects, if the city and the county fund the quasi-design, then Caltrans has basically given us the nod, we'll fund it. Because obviously, we're, the city of Tatchy is not going to fund this interchange. This is going to be a large partnership between KernCog, the county of Kern, the city, with Caltrans leadership, and their, their bulk of the money, not the city.
Yeah, to be explicit, they, they said not with shop funds, but that they would be very motivated to help us find freight funds to, to do this. So, and they kind of said, we'll help you find it.
That's District Nine?
Correct.
That's good to hear.
It's a big deal, and you know this world quite well. It's a big deal when you get them to actually say, we will help figure this out.
Yeah.
They're, they're a very positive partner of the cities, of the city these days.
This is a good thing.
Yes.
But when it first went through, there was nothing out there, like you said, it was just a place to let traffic off the freeway at that moment.
Sure.
You know?
Smallest footprint possible was why it was designed the way it was.
Yeah.
But there's a point at which, yeah, it doesn't work for the underground, the underlying traffic, so.
Yeah, pretty tight.
But this goes also to your comment earlier, when we were talking about the undergrounding of utilities, and the long-term widening and of all of Valley Boulevard sections.
It's why things like concept designs are important, that early engineering work that says, what will this road look like thirty years from now?
Yeah.
They matter.
Yeah.
That's what the circulation? That's what the circulation element in the general plan's for. It's why it matters. You've got to have a plan or you're going to land on something you hate.
Yeah.
We're giving the traveling public options. You know, east-west, Highline, Valley, Tatchee Boulevard, fifty-eight, over-south, Stuber, Dennison, Curry, Tucker, so on and so forth. So lots of options instead of one main thoroughfare. We have any other comments?
One other one would be, there's a, to the east is just an over separation of grade, Tatchee Boulevard Springs Road.
That's right.
Does that get incorporated into the planning of, future planning of any off and off?
No, I don't think so. Caltrans's initial reaction as we talk about that is too close to this interchange for them to ever consider another interchange right there. That's basically their answer to us. So instead, we focus on that one in terms of making sure it's not a, what's the right word? Something that prevents traffic from coming through this area, some kind of, like oversized loads. So that's, that's when we talk about that one.
They'll let you take away crossings, but they won't let you add crossings.
Yeah, yeah.
Caltrans is the same way.
It's with interchanges. They are very particular about how often they allow you to have them, how many in a distance.
This is going to be about a hundred million?
Oh, no, nothing, no, the estimate, initial estimates eight years ago was like six to eight million. So I think right now it's probably under fifteen.
Upper structure work, it's more groundwork.
Groundwork.
Okay.
Right-of-way acquisition will be a little tricky, but not particularly, you know.
So you add a bridge in the mix, it's?
No, it's no, no structure work, yeah.
Okay.
So that keeps the cost tolerable.
So no one else has a comment? I'll make my motion on staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogecord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. City, uh, city manager reports?
Thank you, Mayor Davies. A couple of reminders for you. Coffee with the mayor this Thursday, seven thirty a.m. Please join us. I think it's on social media now, Mr. Costello could speak to it. But we have a, a new gem that's announced. They'll be locating, what's the name?
Any, it's Anytime Fitness.
Anytime Fitness. So it'll be in the old Sears building. So they're, they've submitted plans and hopefully in the next couple of months, they'll be opening along with our New Jersey Mike's subway. So we're excited about that. The airport project continues to clip along nicely. We cannot say enough about the contractor and the engineering team, Tortellia Engineering and Miller Construction. These guys are just top-notch individuals and corporations. As of today, they're on schedule, on budget, and it's just really high-quality work. You know, Ashley and Andrew and their team have been working with them daily on this project. So we couldn't be happier. So in the next couple of months, we'll wrap up that very large airport project. And we can get things back a little smoother at the airport. And we appreciate all the, the tenants and the pilots being very cautious as they move about the airport. And then we have three different contractors that we've hired, the City Council's approved, for this summer's, late summer's asphalt projects. So we have Dennison Road, they've mobilized, they've been grinding, doing some things. You remember SCE initially loops and pulls, we have some work to do there. But we have a lot of curb gutter sidewalk concrete work that's going to happen first and then widening of some of the roads. And again, the boundaries of that basically are from Tatchee Boulevard going south to up near the, the high school. So lots going on there. That's an active transportation program grant project. And then we have Capitol Hills, the contractor has mobilized. I was out there today and they're replacing a lot of the damaged concrete from over the years. It was built in the eighties, so curb gutter sidewalk again. Some of the in-ground raised degrades, the water sewer, those sorts of things. So they're doing concrete on that project and then we'll be doing some asphalt repairs and then slurry sealing all of that area and then restriping. So it's going to be brand-new here in the next couple of months. Be very cautious, be aware of where you're going. So if you're visiting the post office or the hospital, everything, of course, will be open twenty-four, seven. There'll always be a path of travel that's marked appropriately, but we're really excited about, about that project. And then in the city core, if you will, lots of repaving. Robinson from Tatchee Boulevard to TUSD District Office. We have Brentwood, we have Cherry, a lot of the alleys being reconditioned, going from Snyder West towards the core, lots of repaving. So I would ask everybody be, be cautious, be aware. Lots of construction happening, but in the next couple of months, we're going to, once again, have our infrastructure being maintained as we promised with Measure S, coupled with grant funding for those two projects. So we're very, very proud of what's going on. Jay, Andrew, our city engineer and his team, along with Public Works, been doing some concrete repairs prior to the construction. So it's going along really, really well. So it feels like it's winter already with the weather out there, but I'm sure to warm up again and we'll be just fine pouring concrete and laying asphalt. So bear with us, but in the next couple of months, it's going to look very, very nice, maintaining our infrastructure. Makes me very proud. Thank you.
Thank you, great. Any comments from council?
Well, we had the, quickly, I would like to commend Key for, for recognizing, recognizing the ten different nonprofits. You know, that gives a sense of community. You know, they all work on different aspects from safety to economic development to various services for, for people it needs. And so that really creates a sense of community, having those nonprofits. So thank you for recognizing, they do a lot for our community. We had the ribbon cutting for the nineteen fifteen Green Street Dance, which was a great turnout. It was fantastic. It had three TV stations from Bakersfield there and it showed up on all three TV stations and our local newspapers who wrote wonderful articles. And we're hoping to progress that into a natural form of tourism. And we are starting the People of the Nuala Restoration here November, October first. And by the end of fall, all of the murals will be cleaned and sealed. So that's it.
Well, they look beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was nice that you had that project in mind to keep that going. I just have a little bit, in addition to that, I went, that was a great activity. That I also go by, the pickleball courts are always being used, it's great. And also the Valley soccer, five-on-five soccer. It's always busy up there, so it's a good, good thing from the city.
They're going to have to build more soon, who knows?
I know. Corey and I was thinking, are thinking about another pickleball court too, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Phil? On the two oh two, Tatchee-Woodford, the southeast corner, does it look like they've wrapped it up? Or did they complete it? Or any knowledge what the status says? Because I'm going to talk to them again on Thursday at Kern Cog.
Please thank Caltrans District Nine for their maintenance crews. They came out and cleaned the storm drain and they've created a channel for the, the storm drain runoff in that area. So we hope that it's going to work well. And they've done a lot of cleanup of that area. So yes, the project is complete and I know that they're looking at the bigger project, which actually spearheaded by Jay a couple of years ago. And that is to improve State Highway two oh two from the city limits going west out to Woodford, Tatchee. So I know there's lots of surveyors out, they're designing. And I'm not sure when they're going to be improving that stretch, maybe several years from now. But it is in the queue. It's a proj, it's a real project and it's because of Jay and the City of Tatchee leading that effort to make that area safer and, and a better area to travel, you know.
I'll, I'll let them know on Thursday.
And I've done that already, but if you could follow up, that'd be great.
Absolutely, yes, thank you. That's it for now, thank you.
Just as the mayor, I got to attend a birthday party for a member of our community. Pat Greer turned a hundred Saturday. That was kind of a neat event. Had a lot of family here and some of the things he shared. Then we have on the twenty-eighth, the, the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints is going to put on a, a emergency preparedness community fair located at six hundred Anita Drive. It's free to the public. Information, we're going to have, Timery's been working on this. Going to have a lot of different local jobbers, I'm sorry, jobbers, vendors there. Supposed to have, a Red Cross is going to be there and search and rescue. And I don't know who else she's contacted, but it's going to be really a neat item. So if anybody wants to come and make sure their families prepared for, we have emergencies. That's all I have. And if we have nothing else, we will close this meeting and we'll go to closed session. If we have anything to report, we'll come back and report it. Thank you, everybody.